We're just about there. Mark Carlton is running late. He asked that we go ahead and start on time and he'll join us. Caught up at work.
Okay, let me get my rubber band fixed. Is it six?
About five fifty nine.
Okay. Okay, are we ready to go, Catherine? Julie? Are we are live?
We're live.
Okay, it is six o'clock on Monday night, August twenty third. This is a special meeting of the Board of Directors of the Beaufort School District ninety one, located at the district office. I think what, seven twenty, or maybe? And so first thing we're gonna do is do a call to order. Roll call.
Dan Murphy.
Steve Nelson, and then via Zoom, we have
Katie Missbook.
And
Aaron Warman.
Okay. And late will be Mark Carlson, who on his way. All righty, now Dr. Long.
We want to do the pleasurable legion.
Yeah.
All right. My pleasurable allegiance to the flag of the United States
of America.
And to the Republic of the United States. We should undergo an invisible liberty and justice trial.
And we'll go to one point three, agenda review and approval. Dr. Long.
I have one recommendation that in three point oh, after public comment, that you provide an opportunity for board comment.
Is that like a three point one A or something?
You can make it three point two, and then you can change three point two to three point three. That's the superintendent report. So go public comment, board comment, and then superintendent report.
Okay, so we'll add three point two opportunity for board comments after three point one public. And then we'll change three point two, hold on, to three point three superintendent report. Do I hear a motion to amend agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion that we amended as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
We'll pick one.
Katie will take hers, providing the second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, the four ayes. Now we go to consent agenda. Two point one. Correction, approval of the regular meeting minutes for July first. Does anybody have any changes or add-ons or comments?
None here. Steve?
So we got a move, motion to approve regular minutes, meeting, meeting minutes for July first.
I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for July first.
Got a motion by Katie. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Murphy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Katie? Aaron?
Aye.
Aye.
So we got that? Three point oh, communication reports, three point one, public comment. We have no as a note, we have no public in the building, but there is an opportunity for public comment either via Zoom or perhaps in
Written form.
Written form.
Yeah. So to just update the board, when we realized that there, it appeared there were some citizens who wanted, and patrons who wanted to speak to the board, we created a mechanism through our feedback at Beaufort's email address for people to request an opportunity to get a Zoom link to speak to the board. Or if they just wanted to email comments, they could email them to that website or to that email address. We did not actually have anyone request, and I checked the spam folders to to speak to the board tonight, but we did receive correspondence from three patrons from Clancy Taylor, who is a parent, from Whitney Dennis, who is a parent, and from Mr. Mark Ellis, who is a grandparent, has a grandson in our district. So what we did is we provided a, a, for the board, a printout of those. You'll find that in your packet, anything that came in, and you'll see there is a written comment from Clancy Taylor, a written comment from Whitney Dennis, and then Mr. Ellis had a cover letter, and then he had some attachments. So these are all associated with his email, along with some links. And so one of the things we could do is we could describe what they sent in. I do know that these parents named their children in here. I don't know that that it's proper that we would report that out in a public meeting, but we can share what they had to say if you want, or if you just want to read it and consider it. The first two are really concerned about us actually opening up with the high infection rates that we have, and they're looking for a distance learning or an online option. And Mr. Ellis's concern is, is much different than that, and it has to do with the governor's mandate for masks and some concerns he has about that requirement.
So let me kind of make a real quick comment. Mark Carlton, or one of our board members, has just shown up. I don't think it would be, you know, probably, I'm a little reluctant to start putting names of kids and stuff out. You know, if the parents want to make comments, that's fine, but I, I, they don't feel comfortable with identifying children.
Yeah.
That's my own personal thing. Murphy, do you have a comment about that? Katie, what do you think? Do you want kids' names involved in this or not?
I'm not sure if I have an opinion on that yet. I mean, I, I think I'm intending to agree with you. Nate, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Mark, what do you think?
I think the comment is probably more relevant than the kid's name.
Sure. Aaron?
Same thing. We don't really need to know. I mean, we could know who the parent is. We don't need to know who their child is.
Right. So we'll, we'll avoid naming kids as far as some of the stuff that comes out in this. That's, I think it's a good policy. I don't want to get the kids involved. This is between patrons of the school district and the school boards. Okay, that said, I guess, Dr. Long, I'll kind of let you review what you've done.
Well, my, my question is, is do you want me just to read these aloud since they were sent to the board, and that's a public meeting, and we can't really distribute the pieces? And it's, it's not my comments, but I think having me, me voice, it might be a way for the public to understand what people have expressed here. And then you all could have, make comments. If you have any thereafter, then I could go into the reopening. I think that might be a representation of the parents who did take time to, to communicate with us. Is that?
Long?
Yeah.
Um, there's very few people on this Zoom call. I noticed we're streaming on YouTube. So do we have an audience on YouTube?
We do. We do.
So do we have a number of how many people are tuned into YouTube?
You know, I'll have, I think our tech person can find that out for us right now.
And so I would kind of base this premise on if we are having a special meeting here to address some of these issues, and it sounded like there was a need to have this meeting and voice their, their stuff, and they're not joining us on Zoom, but they may be listening on YouTube. We should probably read every last word that somebody commented as if they were attending in person, is my opinion.
We, we have ten people watching the lights from right now.
Okay.
I would agree with Aaron as well, to read it in the record. Yeah.
Okay. I, I think it's a good, because number one, the feedback was directed back to Beaufort's, you know, the district.
Yep.
And that would be you as the administrator, then to relay the information to us, as well as public.
Sure. I, I, I think the cleanest way to be transparent would be for us just to read it into the record and not name kids.
Okay.
And it'll take, so I, I will start with one and go through two and three. And Mr. Ellis has, I may describe a couple of things he has there, but I certainly will read his cover letter. So here we go. First comment is from Clancy Taylor. I write, I'm writing this as a concerned parent of two students. I do not support the idea of going back to in-person schooling at this time. I don't understand how this is a topic up for discussion when last year the case rates were lower. Last year's distance learning proved to be effective, and as a parent gave me the peace of mind that my kiddo was safer. As the new year approaches, I'm perplexed to find that in-person is the only option, even with the fact that our emergency room departments are flooded, and our county is breaking records in numbers of cases. I do not understand how our children that are unable to be vaccinated are expected to be sent to school, then shoulder the responsibility of being socially distant and have masks on throughout the day. This is not something that children should have to navigate and hold responsibility for. When you leave, the only option for sending them to school, that is exactly what you're doing. No one wants this to be, no one wants to be in this pandemic, and we are all tired of this restrictive lifestyle. However, it is not something that children need to be doing in order for us to feel some sense of normalcy. In fact, if we have to be socially distanced to meet and discuss the safety of our children, per your letter stating because of extremely elevated COVID nineteen infection rates in Jackson County, the meeting will be virtual. Why is it okay to have them congregate at school? I am asking for the option of distance learning plan for my children as I do not want my kids to have to carry the responsibility of this pandemic. I work in a field that is child safety and feel this is not safe. There needs to be options for families, and I know without these options, my family will need to begin looking into enrollment into a different school. This is ultimately a choice that I do not want to make, as I have been very happy with Beaufort's educational system. My oldest child loves her school, and my youngest is going to be starting her first year. I am saddened that my only option may be changing their school. I feel that in time, as numbers start to go down and vaccine becomes an option for students under twelve, addressing in classroom learning may be more reasonable and responsible than. Thank you for your time, consideration of my concerns as a community member and parent, Clancy Taylor. Second comment comes from Whitney Dennis. She has two students in our school, and they have attended here for a number of years. She writes, I would like to first thank the board for having a public discussion about this very difficult topic. I am a chief operating officer for a local nonprofit organization, and I understand firsthand how difficult these decisions are. I would like to see distance learning opportunities as an option until a vaccine is approved to protect twelve and younger. My son currently, she describes something I can't share here. Wearing a mask is difficulty and a distraction to his learning. Without a mask or vaccination available, I don't feel comfortable having him in class. With the community spread at the level as it is at, I believe the school will be dealing with many exposures, and a distance learning plan with the option for parents to opt into it would make the most sense to support all children in their learning environments. Currently, with no exposures, the county recommends a fourteen day quarantine for anyone who is not vaccinated, symptomatic or not, masked or not, who was within six feet for fifteen minutes or more of a positive COVID nineteen case. Those who are vaccinated may return to work or regular routine without symptoms. Once symptomatic, a fourteen day quarantine is then recommended. With these measures, it will be difficult to keep children in in-person learning. Without a remote option, our family will have to look for another district to move our children to. In my work, we are on the front lines helping those in quarantine, and we personally have seen families getting sicker and the sick being younger. With the rising COVID nineteen cases in our southern Oregon area due to the Delta variant and the low vaccination rates, it is clear that this portion of the global pandemic may in fact be where we should have been, we should have the most caution. Last year, the school created a distance learning plan that I felt was both sound and safety measures, and set up to help support families in what was an unprecedented event. During that time, our hospitals were not full. Our community was still able to successfully contact trade, do contact tracing most of the time, and community spread was not as common. Our school remains safe and cautious with those lives who are most valuable. Lowering restrictions came with the promise of a vaccine and population herd immunity, and towards the end of the year, we returned to some in-person time with peers. Fast forward to today, herd immunity is not in the near future. Vaccinations are low in our region compared to the state. Our hospitals are full, and southern Oregon counties, including Coos, Curry, Douglas, Jackson, and Josephine are among the highest per capita in the nation for spread of COVID nineteen. Children under the age of twelve do not have a viable option for protection. I am not asking for all schooling to be virtual, as I know other parents may have different feelings or situations, but I am asking for at least an option for, of a remote experience for others. Please consider adding remote learning for families to help promote choice and voice for those in our community. Thank you so much, Whitney Dennis. Third correspondence we received was from Mr. Mark Ellis. And he sends us, the subject is the mandate for masks. He writes, if you have been paying attention to the news cycles lately, you cannot help but know the concerned parents county that some school boards are raising regarding the subject of mask mandates. What parents are led to believe, quote, there is no recourse to be taken. It is mandated by the government, therefore has to be done, or the school will refine, or teachers will lose their jobs, end quote. Numbers of parents throughout the country think there are tools to fight what is believed to be an unhealthy mandate. Parents are asking you to consider their position and rights as parents. Parents are requesting you use the tools out there to fight for what is believed to be right. A bad answer to conform simply because the government tells us to do something is not acceptable, especially for something that is not solid and proven one way or another, a scientific fact. There is no scientific data supporting a severe risk to children. Information is offered to you herein, supporting the belief that masking for kids is unhealthy, not only to physical health and mental health, but bordering on abuse as well. Attached, attachment A is a document outlining mass cleanliness from a laboratory study done in Florida this year. The results are appalling and much more frightening than can be imagined. A recent school administration perceived stance on masks puts all kids at risk under the mandate as the results of what this study found. There are numerous articles and opinions on both sides of this issue. The links herein as attachment B will provide some insight to the use of masks in general. The hope here is that you listen to parents and professional concerns and not put students in the middle of something that affects them the least from all sectors of our society. This virus does not affect children to the degree as the normal flu and cold. Science and evidence tells us that. The attached information from a mask analysis lab results in Florida tell us, tells us the mask carries more severe bacteria from several diseases that this COVID virus is capable of. Masks put our kids at higher risk. As for the learning environment, parents interact with their children on a personal level every day, much more than school officials. Although it may not be necessarily recognized as factual evidence by some parents, by some, parents live with daily and nightly observations of behavior, mood, and conversations of and with their kids. This daily interaction has better chances to notice or identify subtle mental changes in behavior and attitude than that of an instructor with several other children under their watch for a few hours each day of a school session. There is scientific evidence to the fact that masking is not healthy, both in the physical as well as the mental aspect of child development. Some of the tools you may have are exemptions to this recent governmental mandate as stated in the Stateman Journal's interview, Statesman Journal's interview with Kate Brown, Governor Kate Brown. Common sense exemptions, this is a bullet point. Common sense exemptions apply for activities that would be impractical or impossible while wearing a mask, such as eating and drinking, swimming, organized competitive sports, or performances involving singing or speaking in public. In those cases, health officials strongly recommend that people be fully vaccinated eligible. Parents are telling you that our children, while in public settings, fall into several of these exempt categories, especially when the mandate references such an, such as example. Parents are sure an education-based group could reasonably argue other, such as examples, along with those above, if they were inclined to work for the parents of the students and not against them. He continues, let's look at one exemption, speaking in public. All students are requested and expected to speak in public while interacting with their instructor and classmates on a daily basis. This expectation, for the most part, would expect the student to use impromptu speech, the most common public speaking platform. Excuse me. Some students cannot enunciate clearly. A mask exacerbates this. Some students cannot hear clearly. A mask deafens enunciation. Some, if not most, students lead lips for facial or facial expressions as a matter of development. Interpersonal communication is a very important marker for a child's development. A mask is a clear obstacle for any particular student in this developmental period of their lives. A question to ask, how much instruction time is taken away from teachers and kids when they may be consistently interrupted by a roomful of students, each not wearing their mask appropriately at any given time during the day? Other examples listed above allow the same decision-making process, eating, drinking, competitive activities, all of which you decided in the twenty twenty one school year required one hundred percent masking up. You have the tools to use here to unmask our students in this upcoming school year, and we are asking you to do just that. Use those tools to the advantage of the children and fight for their rights and the rights of their parents. Some questions for you. Realistically, here's, these are bulleted. Realistically, what are your expectations for being able to control all children in school? Second point, will they be treated the same? Will some get away with it, while some are subjected continentally to, I think it was continually, to cruel harassment by some of the staff that may be more overzealous than others? What exactly is the protocol for students that just don't, won't conform? Is there, are there really punitive measures you can think you can implement that are different than your normal disciplinary measures? What about students on the bus? Do you really expect the driver to pay a hundred percent attention to the mandate in hopes they won't be fined or lose their job? Or would you rather they drive defensively and deliver the children safely every day? Who is really going to be overseeing this, watching, directing, mandating every minute of the day, every child on campus? Those were the questions. Finally, he writes, included is attachment C, a letter of two community members of Amity, Oregon, for their, from their school superintendent. This is what is expected from our school's administration. Use the tools and strategy at your disposal, you know, will be in the best interest of students, their parents, and not the government. Sincerely, a grandparent of a student, Beaufort Charter School. And then I'm not going to read these all the way through, because there's some technical stuff, but I will describe them. Attachment A is a press release out of Gainesville, Florida, on June sixteen. It describes some parents submitted some masks to a lab, and they came back and they found all kinds of stuff on the mask, but not the virus. And then they also tested some freshly, these were freshly laundered, but they also tested some other freshly laundered ones that hadn't been exposed to kids, and they felt that this demonstrated that there are lots of things out there that masks protect you from, but the virus was not found on. Then the second attachment, attachment B is a list of thirty-one different links to various studies and research regarding masks. And then the attachment C is a letter from a let's see the name.
It's the letter from the school board in Amity to the governor.
Yeah, I, I think actually I think it was sent by the superintendent to them, taking the position that the district believes that local control should make the decision about precautions and not the governor, and taking that position opposing masking. So those were the comments from the three people who did respond in writing to us. And yeah. I don't know that it's representative of the probably hundred thirty families that we serve, but it's a sample.
So public comment. Feedback has been put into the record. And there's no more under three point one.
Right.
So we'll go to three point two. Opportunity for board comments. Aaron, have you got any comments based on what you've seen so far?
Do you rebut it, Aaron? Let you go to Katie and come back to them.
Okay, Katie? What do you think?
I want to thank anybody that actually took the time to write in their comments, and I haven't read through them. Well, Dr. Long just did, but I plan to reread through everything and just think about what people said.
Okay.
I got my backup. Did you guys, you guys got me?
Yeah, we can hear you now, Aaron.
I was saying, I don't know where to start. We could go down a lot of different rabbit holes, but I guess I will say that I heard all the public comment and without putting opinion on it too much. But I heard it all, and I understand everybody's concerns.
Okay. Aaron's done. Mark?
Yeah, I have a few, few comments. Mostly what I've heard from citizens. We all know the concerns, I think. Or we've all heard the concerns, I should say, of the citizens. I think Mark Ellis's letter represents what I've been hearing over and over and over again from, from citizens. The the little bit of I guess, asking around that I've been able to come up with, or tools, I should say. We're looking for, we're looking for ways around the mandate and tools to make the choi- the choice on our own as a, as a district. Some of the feedback I've gotten from other districts in this, in the state is that the school does not have punitive authority when enforcing the mask rule. And coming from Cole Gill with the, with the state. So I think we should look at that as a, as a tool for making our our own decisions, I guess, without the state. There's the, the talk of fines. The, the talk of fines, um. I'd like to know what the maximum fine is, I've heard numbers, but it seems doable if, if that's an option. I guess, I guess the question we faced ourselves is, are. Whi- which direction do we want to go as a board, maybe it's somewhere in the middle, but, um. And the, the direction being, are we, um. Going to make our own decisions or, or do what the state says? Keeping out of trouble at the same time. Without going into a bunch of detail on why one way or the other, um. I, I think there's some tools there to take the approach that some of our citizens would like us to take. I think that wraps up my comments for COVID masks.
Yeah, and there's an opportunity for more comments of. Okay, maybe to, okay, after you discuss kind of the direction we appear to be going at this point.
Mark, you're done?
Yeah, Murphy.
The school districts have to meet the state requirements regarding masking, including to support personnel. Primarily, if the state mandates it. You're really limited on how much you can defy. And it's where most of the money for the funding of the school districts come from, is from the state.
Okay, um, obvi- obviously, this is a very difficult topic. And throughout this process, there have been people that. Um, do not want their kids in school exposed to the COVID. Virus. There's other parents, people saying, my kid had, cannot handle masks. Others are saying this is a state. Uh, issue of control, there's been evidence or stuff presented that, you know, school boards. Need to. Take a political action of saying we will set our own. Pathway on trying to deal with how we handle. Masks and whether there's rules and regulations and, and all that sort of stuff. I have been. Reaching out to people in the district that I know. And. You know, these comments mirror what a lot of people are saying is. I don't feel sending my kids to school, I don't feel safe, I want other options. There's the political side of, we de- we defy the state and set our own standards. And, you know, we, we say no masks, uh, and then we run the risk of. Having some sort of a. Uh, fine or penalties imposed on the district. And as Murphy said, you know, we are organized under state rules, regulations and laws. Parents are asking for, are there options? I, I can see both sides. Um, so I think part of where I'm headed with this is, you know, we. Need to be on solid footing with legal advice from our administration. Which would mean either contacting our school attorney. Or resources through Oregon School Board Association, as well as. Uh, there are. Regional. Superintendents and schools that are working on the same problem, Dr. Long, have you been involved with them?
You know, um, COVID has brought districts together, you know, I think in the past people had pride in their own district. And felt a little competitive with neighboring districts. In this case, the superintendents on our region talk regularly. And the, the political pressure on superintendents varies based on the disposition of the community they're in. But everyone's dealing with the spectrum of people who want online because they don't want to send their kids to school. And people who want their kids to come to school and not wear masks. Um, and, and it, the percentages varies, but those are the two ends of the spectrum. There are a number of people in the middle who want their kids back at school and, and feel the mask, for example, is, it's, it's doable. I will tell you from our experience, the children, the students in grades K through. Six or so there had, were actually really pretty successful with the masks. Um, tended to be harder if there was a different opinion in the family and that, you know, you're looking at your parent as the. As the authority and key person you depend on, and then you're looking at the school telling you something else. I think that's probably the more stressful thing for kids. The kids who can get vaccinated are twelve and older. And we see, but you know how middle school kids are, they're always testing, testing things out because they're trying to figure out how to be their own person. Um, and the, the issue for the district is, how do we find that happy medium where we can serve people? Or give them options that allow their kids to be served? The fighting the battle with the state on the masks. And now with employees on the vaccinations, you know, th- those are really hard things for some people to accept. And, um, and yet if I look at it, the position of the teachers association across the state is in support of masks and vaccination. So now I have a third variable in here, and that is the people who serve the kids. So, so the board could make a decision one way or the other. But you have employees and agreements with unions and you, and we have to navigate that one. And I think what I've gotten from all this is through wildfire and pandemic. And vaccination stuff and masks, our staff has, our staff has really hung together. Uh, through people having to relocate because of, of family economic situations. Through illness and loss of, of loved ones to COVID and other things, you know. People losing their houses in fire, all of that, we have stuck together. We do not have as many options and, and, uh, when we get down to the reopening plan, which I want to take you through in a minute. Um, there is a middle path we can take. But I don't think, I think if we, if we fight the thing on the masks, we're going to lose a, a large base of our parents. Because they really believe then we're all looking out for the safety of kids. And yet you heard, uh, Mr. Ellis express concerns about the impact of wearing max on max, uh, wearing masks on kids. And there is, there is some validity, but we are in a pandemic and the impact of a pandemic on everyone has not been good. So what I know is there are stresses on our society and our schools that are making it challenging for anyone to offer what we used to offer. Just keeping employees together and moving forward is a challenge. We have an unprecedented number of superintendencies that are open, we have administrators that are leaving, leaving the profession. We have teachers that are leaving the profession, we're seeing that in healthcare. And, um, what I believe at this point is we've been able to keep our team together, serving kids and families. So, um, I'm not sure from my perspective, I always start with the student. And what's the service to the student and parents, and then we work out from that. And it feels like there are peripheral things that are trying to guide the conditions around that. And we're spending a lot more energy on that than what we're actually serving, providing for kids. We are planning on opening school the day after Labor Day. And yet I recognize there are parents who will not want their kids in our school. They definitely will not want to reengage with us if they feel that we are going in a more unsafe direction.
So, that one time there was, they mentioned online options. Have, have we researched or is there a potential that we could? Work with online academies or something?
So I am actually researching one option, I'm not going to say what the opt, what the entity is. Because we're kind of trying to work with them to see if we can do this. I think for those people who want an online option, which tends to work better with older kids, if that's the way they want to go. Um, I think we may be able to offer an option that keeps them connected with our school community. Uh, we probably would have to hire someone who could be the interface between that online option academy. And the family, which keeps them connected with us. Otherwise, they will be forced to go to other non Butte Falls related entities. And we've lost that ability to have a connection with those families as things that improve. So I think there's that, we are, we cannot do what we did last year, we are a hands-on school. But even the governor made it very clear, our goal is to get kids back at school. My goal is, is if that's, if that's the other mandate, I want to have the conditions around that as safe as possible. And everyone wearing a mask, quality mask is a big plus for that, I mean, we do know that. Um, I, I know there was a study reference, um, I, uh, there are lots of studies, that was a group of parents who did it. There are a lot of scientific studies that show many things, wearing a new mask every day or having a clean mask is one thing that really helps. We had fewer other things occur because wearing a mask protects you in a lot of ways, so I think that's a plus. But, um, you will not have a COVID virus on your mask if you're not exposed to anyone who has COVID. But we know that even on our skin, right now, you have the workings for staph infection and things like that. So we are going to find those things around us.
So is there, there were some concerns brought up about enforcement of masks and conduct and all of this stuff. You know, thinking as a school board member. Do you see that perhaps by hiring additional educational aides or people? To help in our classrooms to help monitor or work with the kids and stuff? Is, is that a viable? I, option, I, I, you know, we're talking budget, but you know, money right now with that sort of a thing. To me is, is not an issue. If, if we can have kids in person, uh, in our classrooms, we have taken precautionary measures. With, uh, filters, air circulation, uh, what the other. Uh, distancing issues and stuff.
Well, well, I'll tell you what it really comes down to, and this is the hard part when we're forced to do distancing, it really is our relationship with parents. If, if parents are adamant about something and their student has difficulty with it, the student is not going to be su- as successful. And that's, that's at both ends, that's, having people who are uncomfortable sending their kids to school, send them to the school. But then, um, not, you know, talking about all the things that aren't working, that they probably shouldn't be at school. Because that's a, that's a stress on the kid, having students at school who, um, really are being reinforced not to wear their mask. It's a stress on them, we have to have everyone wear the mask. And it puts a, it puts the school, uh, support staff and teachers in the position of disciplining on something that. It is not really an issue with most people unless there's something going on with that kid. So, so having more people might help, but what we really want to do is we, we want kids to know. We want kids to understand that the mask piece is just another level of protection, we do a lot of things. Washing your hands is another really good, good thing to be doing, not touching your face, but. My mom told me that when I was growing up, even before this. So there are some, some norms that we need to reestablish and how we just take care of each other. That are about, even with COVID gone, would be healthier sanitary practices. But I do think that we have these two groups and we heard them both represented here, and behind that are some fears. And, um, and, and, and there, and I do not question when someone's afraid that they're afraid, it's. What are we going to do to mitigate it? And I know that the fears of each of these groups are only made more intense if we move to the direction of the other. So I lean into what the science is. And in this letter from the one person who works in healthcare about the distancing and everything. Actually, the county health standards for how we, because schools are kind of, when you are kind of a unique environment. If you restrict who comes on your campus and you cohort, your kids, that their quarantine rules are actually different now. That a student who's wearing a mask, if they're in a room with someone who has coronavirus, last year, that would have been quarantined the whole group. Now, it's possible that the only person who ends up quarantining is that student who has COVID. And do I, do, do I think it's the perfect solution? No, I, I think there's always going to be a risk of this. But I do know that we have a generation of kids that if we do not intervene in ways that get them education, get them with teachers. And in our case, as a school that uses the outdoors, gets them outdoors doing stuff, those are healthy things that will help kids. Otherwise, there are anxiety things that just grow, there are other emotional things that occur. And I think some parents have been seeing the effect of that. In fact, I know they have, that's, counseling is the area that we're, we've tried to beef up for our kids. Um, ca- if you want a profession to go into now, it's counseling because there aren't enough, everyone wants some. But we have been pretty successful at getting that service for kids and families.
You know, Dr. Long?
Yes, go ahead.
You know, this meeting tonight has several agenda topics on it, and this is the first one we're talking about. But they all start morphing into each other and how they affect each other. Um, I hear the word mandate. And, you know, if it's not the mask, it's the vaccine, if it's not the vaccine. It's the curriculum CRT, if it's this and that. And what gets really frustrating from my perspective is this threat of funding and lawyers. And, you know, it's always going to go back to that, it's always going to go back to the state. And I just would love to see a district like ours do something different. And just not be at the whim of the general thing of. The state is telling us to do it, therefore we must. If you look around nationally, there are other states doing different things. And maybe the end result of this is we just unfortunately live in this state and we're not moving. So that we can get into another set of. Um, corri- you know, mandates that are a little more lenient, you know. If you guys mentioned Florida, they're doing things completely different, managing COVID. Um, they're offering up all kinds of different treatments instead of the vaccine or in concert with the vaccine. There's other states that have banned masks. So, you know, I heard both sides of those comments, I heard what you said just now, it makes sense, I agree with a lot of what you said. But I've been on this board a long time and I would love to see. Us not have to follow everyone else in one of these topics and.
I, I, I think on one of them, there definitely is one that is a misperception and that's around the critical race theory. So you be, I, well, maybe, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, so I'll, I'll let you finish, we will talk about our reopening plan though, and that might help.
Yeah, I just, you know, when, when Dan commented on it, I, I understand it. I, I, I have to agree with what Mr. Murphy said is, you know, we could lose our funding. But you know what, I've heard that for ten years. We say it probably every meeting, oh, oh my God, we could lose our money, we could be closed down, we could get fined. I'm to the point with everything in this whole debacle is, let's try it out, you know? That, I was thinking about this meeting today, I pay property taxes. This school exists, this board exists because people are funding it. And if we're not providing a public service to our students. People are going to go, you said it in the comments, they're going to go find something else. And I guess to contrast that is, wouldn't it be wonderful if we had a system? Instead of paying property taxes, we could fund private schools because they are doing things differently. Um, another comment I have is, I don't think that we can make a school safe. Some of the comments are, you know, I can't take my student there because of all these different things and unless all these safeguards are in place. It's impossible to do, it's impossible to make a school completely COVID safe. It's impossible to make. a school completely COVID safe. It's impossible to make Walmart COVID safe. Or the mall, or a movie theater, or whatever. And our big management nationwide has said, we're not gonna shut down restaurants again. We're not gonna do this big shutdown. Um, so this whole thing is such a mess. And how does it relate to us? If we're talking about letting our kids take off the mask and go back to school, I'm all for that, you know, the, the, the risk is low. The, the risk, it's been proven twelve and under. You know, some people are saying, well, until, you know, we get the vaccine approved for zero to twelve, your, your school's gonna be unsafe. Well, you, I don't think there is a safe way out of all of this as far as managing a school to where it's, you know, and then you go nine months, twelve months back and, oh, you know, we, we could be sued if we uh, don't take all these measures and somebody at our school gets COVID. You know, it's way beyond that. It's way beyond the threat of an accountability from a school district to get sued because we opened and we let kids walk around. And I agree with Mark a lot on, he got into the fine details of how are you going to manage these kids to wear masks? And I think he said it pretty well. I mean, you can't, but it, it, it's almost like a political thing to put this thing on your face. And if that's, if that's what we have to do so that we don't get sued and we can open, I guess it's that. But getting back to my point, I sure wish we could do something different to buck the system and not have this threat that we're gonna have to close down because they find us or they cut our funding. I, I just don't see that. We're in this big epidemic and I think, you know, I don't know, maybe we'd hit the state news or national news if we got shut down because we tried to provide some freedom to our kids. That's my little rant, sorry.
We don't, you know, we've got a couple of letters from parents with kids. We've got a letter from some other people that have given us examples of this and this. So we're kind of hearing from both sides. The one thing we're not hearing from is some of the people that live in the district that we're gonna be able to get up in the morning, have their kids go to school. And I'm going to project what some of those parents have said to me. I just want my kids educated. I just want my kids at school. Their kids are wearing masks. Uh, I've been in the doctor's office a lot the last month and talking to health professionals and what is happening down in Metford with the COVID and the ICUs and the people that are getting sick. And today, when I was going down I five and I looked off to the right, and I thought, what are all those cars? Those are people going through getting COVID testing. And so, you know, there's a reaction, kind of a lag time of, yeah, maybe this is more serious than we thought. The doctors are telling me one thing with my, my stuff that, you know, you better do this and so on and so forth. But that said, as, as everybody has alluded to, these are times we've never been in before. We don't know the answers. We're reacting. We're getting beat up from one side, beat up from the other. The COVID is mutating and, and finding ways to attack younger people. And then some of the illnesses are more critical. I'm being denied healthcare because of COVID cases in the valley. I'm put on the back burner and I can't get service. And it sucks. I don't like it. Uh, but that's where we are. And so uh, you look at is, is, you know, this is not a long, I, I, I'm gonna take the long-term look and say, I don't think this is a long-term issue, but it could be a pretty critical, more of a short-term issue. You know, we talk about funding and mandates by the state and all this other stuff. So, you know, using the most recent information from, you know, the doctors and the professionals that I've been around and people that are working in the hospitals and trying to help people and stuff. They're saying, hey, this is not something to mess with. Now we fast forward to our kids and our schools. How do we educate kids? There's options for parents. None of them are really good. The options are, I don't feel comfortable with COVID. It's not the school, it's the disease. I'm, I wanna keep my kids at home. I wanna protect them. The parents have that right. They've always had the right to move their kids around, do whatever they felt is best for them, education, health and everything else. Now, you know, this role is a list of all of the voters inside the Butte Falls School District, all of the people that are registered voters. It's not just property owners or taxpayers or parents or kids. There's almost a thousand people on this, on this list. This was gotten from Jackson County Clerk's Office prior to the election. So it's theirs, public record. This was gotten by a friend of mine. This is not school property, but I'm using it as an example to say, these are people uh, a little less than a thousand that we're not hearing from. And their expectation is, I want the school to do the right thing. Just have your doors open, educate the kids, do the best you can. You know, we get money from the state. We work from the ground up. Aaron, you, myself and Dan Murphy have a almost forty years of board time trying to keep this school open and running and build it up from where it was ten years ago. There's been people in the community that have donated thousands of hours and thousands of dollars of time and resources to promote the school. And the last thing we wanna do is shut it down or tear it apart. And, and so, you know, trying to look at, what do we do? You know, what are the options? And uh, you know, it's, it's kind of a, a risk reward or, you know, take a chance, whatever. And you know, I, I think families have, have the option. If, if they wanna do something with their kids, I'll support that, no matter what. If they feel that they need to put their kids online or if they need to do this or that, I, I back them a hundred percent. Other people in the district with little kids, you know, you see working families and stuff. You know, they can't do this. They don't have the option. They can't homeschool. I don't know that the school has the ability to do distance learning and then hands-on in-class learning. We, we talked about that last year. It sounds like maybe if there's the potential for co-op-ing with some online academies or helping the parents to find other options, I would support that, even if it does, you know, take a few kids out of school. I don't think that there would be a mass exodus, uh, you know, with, with some of these people, because they're in a position of, I'm trying to live, I'm trying to run a family and, and this stuff. So, you know, if we can work with the parents and do stuff, uh, and, and I don't wanna fight the state. I don't wanna get into political things. I'm not gonna go to Salem and take up a cause. Um, you know, it, to me, it's okay, they're dealing with COVID. There's also the interpretation of it's, it's control of the district. You know, we've, our board or the school's about a hundred and twenty years old. We've got a cornerstone over there from nineteen oh eight. And, and the community has backed the schools. We put millions of dollars into infrastructure. We pay what, three and a half million dollars a year and salary in this district. And so, you know, we are a, a business that is getting beat all to hell by something that we really can't control in trying to provide education. And it's, it's not about politics. It's what do we do to serve our people and our kids in this community and, and try to teach community values and educate the little kids and the ABCs and the one, two, threes and that sort of stuff. A- and keep them healthy. And so, you know, based on what I've seen, um, and, you know, talking to other people, I met at schools and some of the schools opened today. And you, and you watch the parents, how'd you do? Oh, schools, okay. They all masked up. They weren't fighting anything. I sat there in Costco for about an hour and watched about a thousand people go in and out of that store. Before they could get in there, they all had to wear masks. There was no fight, no nothing or anything else. Uh, you know, some of the kids adapt pretty good. If the, if kids are having trouble with the mask or family, then, then, you know, you have to make adjustments. You have to make allowances. And, you know, listening to this stuff and then all of these people that are in our district, you know, kind of not to, I hate to use silent majority, but I, I have reached out to different people. They, they don't wanna get embroiled in, you know, they've trained their kids, you know, go to school and protect yourself. And, and we're not down on the, the micromanaging. So, you know, I'm inclined to say if parents feel they they have to protect the kids, you know, let's work with them and try to find alternative stuff. Or if they have better ideas, let, you know, come into the administration, talk to the, you know, their, their teachers and staff. We'll try to accommodate them. We've, we've done that in the past. It's not a, a take it or leave it thing. But if we can help accommodate whatever it takes to educate the kids, that's where I'm coming from.
So, let me just jump in and maybe we can move on, but um, I just wanna make it clear my position. This Jackson County case count now more than ever is very serious and important to me, and I have been watching it and keeping apprised of the situation. So maybe the hope here, maybe the end result, I kinda know what the end result of this mask mandate topic is going to be, is we're gonna have to do it. But maybe we can um, watch if we follow the rules and when we start coming down off of that high-risk category at a county level, maybe we can, you know, really start trying to seek that freedom and moving away from the masks and and having a little more, uh, you know, ability to work with our kids and open up more and more of the school to get back to normal because it, you know, in recent memory, we, we basically told society, you, you can take them off around in July and here we are, they're, they're coming right back on. The reason for that, though, now more than ever, is that it's actually here locally. You know, all this last year, it was a national thing. It was local, it was here and there, but like Katie said, or, or somebody earlier, it now more than ever in our own house, basically, in this old county, it's really, really high. So, you know, we do need to take all the measures that have been taught to us and provided to us. And I guess what I'm saying is, if we can manage it precisely when it starts going down, maybe we can be out ahead of it and, and uh, you know, starting more sports or lessening the masks or whatever we need to do. But I, I'm with you, Steve, and I'm with you, Phil. It's now more than ever, we need the safety measures in place because it is so local. It's in our county. The hospitalization and all that stuff. So, I don't know, we could ramble on all night about this and we could all piss each other off even more and make more and more people mad or rile their blood some more. I get all worked up on all of this, but I don't know, we're an hour into it and we're still on one topic.
And I actually would like to say something on, on piggybacking on Aaron when I get a chance.
Okay, uh, let me kinda add on to what Aaron is saying. You know, it, it's not a decision and then, then I just say, okay, that's it, we're gonna let it ride. This is a, a ongoing process that we, we're going to need to review at every board meeting. And maybe, you know, monitor stuff. I, I look at it and I'm thinking, hopefully this, this situation is gonna evolve where we can ease up a little bit. Maybe this COVID rush, people will start doing whatever to, you know, mask supposedly, depending which side you come from, will help reduce the spread. But, you know, bring the kids back, do the masking thing, and then monitor, see that if we have cases coming into school or if we show the risk, you know, then, you know, you can start easing up. And, you know, have kind of a living uh, guideline of how do we react to something that, that we can't control? And, and then try to provide the best education we can. Even if we gotta spend extra money to try to protect the kids, do class age and other stuff like that. And if we have kids having trouble, okay, how can we work with the parents to offset that? Are there alternative types of mask or what, you know, what, what is working? I don't wanna say one size is gonna fit all or take it or leave it. But, you know, maybe we'll get past this crush and you'll start seeing some uh, declining rates. And hopefully we can guide our school through this um, for the benefit of everybody.
I, I, I would give this illustration. It just struck me, while we've been doing this with COVID, we've also had a series of wildfires that have come through here. And for the last several years, we've had to deal with smoke. The problem with COVID is you can't see it, okay? You all know when the smoke gets, where they start shutting down, you shouldn't be outside if you have respiratory things. And as it gets worse, you take precautions, you limit. And I would say the mask thing right now is one of those precautions, like when it's, gets really smoky and you, and it's affecting your respiratory system. It doesn't mean that in six months, the air isn't gonna be clear. But you do that now because of the damage. The, the dilemma is, with COVID is, is that when we take it in and get it, then we give it back out. And so I appreciate your comment, Aaron, because I don't, I don't like wearing a mask and I'm looking for the day where we don't have to. But if we could start school and have fidelity in that, and in our communities, we could do that. It, the rates will start to come down. The state is going to, at some point, the governor is going to say no more masks. I would like that to come earlier than later, but what we're seeing right now, they are one of the preventative things that make a difference. And, and unfortunately, we have a lot of counter uh, documents that people are sharing, not all that, that, that are credible. I mean, they, but they believe them. And I, when you believe something, you believe it. So we can't argue the point. I would like to start school with many, as many kids here as possible. Our teachers are gonna be ready. And we think that that start of school is really important for kids. It sets the tone for the year. And um, for those parents who, who are reluctant to send their kids, I, you know, will try to work with them, but I do think the kids that are here on the first day of school and we're doing things are gonna have the run and start, and that's what I want. And I have worn a mask more in places that I probably didn't need to, because I do not be want, wanna be one of the people that hinder a kid get into school. And that, I, that's really where I'm coming from. I, I don't like wearing a mask and, and, and yet that thing around smoke and taking precautions when it gets bad, that's what we do. We all wear seat belts. That's a, that's a mandate. It's a proven safety piece. Masks have the research behind it. When COVID gets bad, it helps. Katie, you wanted to say something?
I do, thank you. Um, uh, people have said a lot of things, but my understanding is, it's like tax dollars um, that are funding our schools, which is state-controlled. And our school is not only facing fines, but loss of um, license or penalties on license for teachers and administration. So that's pretty serious to me. Um, also, uh, I know a couple of parents wrote in on this topic, but I've heard a lot of feedback from people in our community, in our schools, both sides. Quite a bit, to the point where parents are thinking about just homeschooling because they don't like how things are going. Again, I wanna say this is all coming from the state and not our district. Um, but I don't see the harm like Mark and Aaron are saying into looking into our options, as long as we're not spending a lot of money. And maybe just polling parents, if they are interested in looking for county control, which I think is our only option, um, which would be county control, not district control. And to make sure that if we can, to provide online options for the parents that are really feeling strongly on the other side and just nervous about sending their kids to school, and that's it.
Can I make one more comment? I don't, I don't think anyone here is qualified to decide what's best for someone else's kid. That's that's that parent's responsibility. I know the state probably disagrees with that. They like to tell parents what's best for their kids. But I don't think you'll get a single parent in this district to agree that someone else is better suited to make that decision. So a couple of the decisions that parents can make is online schooling. There is countless options across the nation for online schooling. In-person schooling, locally, there's one, it's this school. Um, the other option is if masks are really effective, that's a personal choice. You wear your mask, you don't get COVID. Same with kids, same with teachers, uh same with anyone that's concerned about it. So we're not gonna be able to make a decision that suits everybody, but you said it earlier, we start with the kids. That's the whole point of this. Nine million dollars a year for kids. And they're not proven to be an extreme risk of COVID. Everybody else around them is, teachers, community members, administrators, bus drivers, everybody else is. But the kids have not been proven to be extreme risk. There's always risk, like Aaron said. So I think we need to focus, start with the kids, like you said. And teachers have vaccines, parents have vaccines, there's masks, there's lots of personal choices you can make to protect yourself or your loved ones without shoving down someone else's throat. That's uh, that's all in my view.
I I see Dan Murphy bring in some uh articles apparently from the newspaper recently or something.
Bedford Mail Tribune, Sunday, August fifteenth, virus claiming younger victims as deaths climb yet again. This hits the kids, and as much as possible, wear the masks. And then at least you have a chance to avoid it. And wouldn't you rather have a mask than to have one of them die on you?
So parents' choice to make the decisions best for their kids. Not the newspaper, not the school board, the parents.
Well, the parents do have the option. We spelled it out before.
Comment on the masks. Since I've been sick, I've worn a mask. It never bothered me in the past. But boy, there's times now where I almost get panic attacks from having to wear a mask because whatever it is, you can't breathe. And then I can understand a kid in a class or anybody trying to breathe when you feel like you can't getting air. I understand that. So, that said, I can identify with, you know, if if kids are having trouble. Now, you know, does every kid have to wear one of these masks or can they wear a face shield or are there options?
Do they have to wear a mask? That they, the state has defined it because if you have the have the other things, then you actually off gas more. That that that, yeah, that's the reality. And in fact, there's a new OSHA rule that we have to provide K ninety-five masks for any employee who requests that, which are the ones that, that's what I have, that's what I buy, because I paid for this myself.
Sure, you know, there's is there maybe some sort of a a more attractive option to usability of a mask for kids versus just slapping a mask on them, you know, when they get to school? Is there options?
Well, I I do know that some parents bought masks, you know, I mean, what what kids like is when it's not a black or white mask, but it's personalized.
Okay.
But it does need to, it really needs to fit fairly tightly.
Do kids need K ninety-five masks?
Um, I, if I had a child, that's what I would provide for my child.
I see people wearing all different types of cloth masks, designer masks, other stuff like that.
A a a hospital, those blue and white ones that we see a lot of people wearing, the what I heard the latest is they're about forty percent effective. So, so, yeah, but but if, you know, it's an invisible thing, right? And if if we we have varying degrees about how serious it is, so so uh so we, we're complying when we have them wear a mask and we're meeting the standard there. But OSHA has raised the standard even higher for employees, not that they have to wear a K ninety-five, but that if they ask, we have to provide one. So I, you know, what I would suggest is, let's go through the other agenda items, because you have a a point at the end where you can comment, and maybe that's where things, some things can come together, or we can, you know, know where we're headed.
Okay, well, that said, uh pretty well beat this up. Board comments. We'll go to three point three, superintendent reports school reopening. Critical race theory, COVID protocols, Dr. Long.
So first of all, I gave you all a a document tonight, and this was just pulled together this weekend because we got the template. It is a draft, it's not the final operational plan. Um, I am required to submit to the Department of Ed an operational plan by the twenty seventh of August. This, you remember last year we had a blue document? This is the blue document, but it's it's now called an operational plan, not a plan for reopening, because they're assuming that we're inside in school. So the things are yellow are things that we're still working to make sure we have the accurate description. This reflects the not the six feet distance needed in classrooms, but the three feet. For that reason, we will be moving our sixth and seventh grade, we are moving our sixth and seventh grade students out of the community hall, and our plan is to have them back on the elementary campus. And we're resetting all the classrooms so that we can we can move forward. By the end of the year, where we're starting the year is where we ended the year as far as the seating requirements by the state. Um, there are things, you can see there are some things that are required in terms of our disease management health protocol, that's required. There's a list of things on the left that we have to make sure we've attended to on the right. Um, I am going to um acquire some additional tables. Actually, the church uh across the street from the elementary school may be able to loan us some, not putting it on if they don't, but um some eight-foot round tables with chairs. I can put four kids at those. That would allow us to increase our capacity at the cafeteria to have fewer sessions of breakfast and lunch, so we can have more focus on kids learning. And we would probably run our kid kindergarten, first and second grade in one cohort, our third, fourth, and fifth grade to the second one, and then our sixth and seventh grade in a third one. And that'll be our breakfast and lunch cycle. Uh, we're gonna continue to have breakfast and lunch for at the high school in the at in the gym. They're not gonna come over to the elementary campus, and uh we have a support system to get the meals over there. So I'm just sharing this with you to let you see what's here. There's the the section on page fours around physical distancing. Talks about our cohorts. There's a piece on face coverings, the the uh Oregon Health Authority rule around face coverings. Yeah, uh, the isolation and quarantine pieces. We really have the protocols for these all in place because we had to under our previous plan. We're just updating those areas where they're changing like quarantine and isolating, they're changing the rules on that. And by the way, those changes are occurring at the county level. We're gonna, each county gets to determine how that happens. So we'll be relating it to the the county standards on that. I don't think unless we have a serious outbreak, that we will have to have as many kids gone when we have COVID come to school. Since last year, we bought the air purifiers that has helped not only with COVID, it's actually it purify, cleans the air, it's gotten some other things out of there, including some um allergens, and um we didn't really have health issues with kids in the spring. I think that was a plus. And then um we have uh we have two new office managers and we're training our people, retraining people now, or training new people on how to give the the um I'm trying to binax something, a quick test for COVID, because we're required to be able to do that if we have um a kid show up and there are symptoms and the parents agree to do that, uh we do isolate the students. So, so those are all, that's the plan, it's shorter than the one we had before. But in it with their, they're wanting to make sure we have those safety protocols in place. So I'm not asking the board to approve anything or not, I just wanted you to have this, because this is what what we have to put together, what we're required to put together. Um, other things that have come up in this, um uh, there have been some topics that have been linked to, what is the state telling us to do? And one of the topics I think you're all aware of is something that's uh called critical race theory. And this is actually a theory that was developed about forty years ago and has been prom predominantly a a a theory or discussion point at the university or college level. I think it had been heated up this year because there have been some other initiatives in the state uh around equity, which is about um making sure that we see all of our students and serve them all and uh and not not marginalized students of color. Um, that's been tied to this critical race theory because of all the Black Lives Matter movements and all those types of things. But I want to tell you, there is no critical race theory curriculum being mandated in the state of Oregon. There isn't. There, there is uh, there's a, there's an effort to make sure that every kid is seen and supported. Um, but the the curriculum, social studies curriculum standards, I think were set um a few years ago before this all popped up, and the next uh revision will be in twenty twenty-seven. And that's a public process. Um, uh, what's been tied to that, I had one patron say, well, what about something called SEL, which is social emotional learning? Well, social emotional learning is also not related to critical race theory. Social emotional learning is talking about the things that happen with kids developmentally around their self-awareness and their self-management and their sense of responsibility to others. And we would call basically those characteristics, we wanted our kids so they're good citizens and they work with other people and they they um help people. And and we do have some components of that. Social emotional learning has gotten more um, I guess, press because we've been dealing with the fallout of the impact on kids of the Great Recession in two thousand eight through two thousand ten. And the economic impacts on family and some of the horrible things that were happening in families as a result of that. Those are the kids who are coming through school systems right now, and that's why there's been an increased need for counseling. The pandemic has not helped that. So in our school, we really have been working on on practices that help kids get a sense of how to self-regulate when they get upset, rather than just going off and and creating, you know, harm to others and themselves. Uh, it's being aware that when you're starting to lose it, what do you do? And what you don't, what you were probably taught is count to ten, right? Or maybe count to twenty if you have real issues. Well, that is part of it. It's about letting your brain calm down. And so we have some practices that we use in our schools, as many schools are adopting, that are around social emotional awareness, with self-regulation. Um, and and uh I think our words we use in our districts in the past is be safe, be responsible, be respectful. It's that that piece that that helps us get along with each other. Um, and then it certainly practices that we see right now in our, in our communities and our political plot. We need more people doing that, don't we, who listen to each other and are respectful? So um, so that that is a very different thing, but it's not related to critical race theory, but in the absence of information, you know, people talk. So I just want you to be aware of that, and that's actually to respond to that one person, I'd be glad to talk to them more too.
So on on something like that, how do you, how do you write the curriculum for that? Like, science, math, English, that that it's black and white. It, this is how you talk, this is how you do, you know, this is two plus two, something like that. It it to me, it's manners, it's it's behavior, it's so, so the state is
No, the the state actually hasn't created a curriculum for it, but there are resources that we get through counselors and that are developed, there are activities we do with kids. So one of them, a practice that we've adopted in in uh in our high school is we will have a class meeting and and part of that is a spur. We have kids who are, has, everyone gets an opportunity to speak and say something, but we learn how to elicit the people about being critical of them, so that they aren't afraid to speak up. Um, if their conflict comes up in the class, then it allows you to talk about it, allows kids to express their opinion, and then you problem solve together. And that is the the last step of of social emotional learning is is living with people responsibly and problem solving in good, good decision-making that that helps your community work together.
So how how does that get confused with critical race theory?
I don't know. I I don't, there are a lot of things that get confused, but but you're exactly right, but 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 I have to tell you when it happens. People, I want people to ask about it, and I really appreciate this patron asking that because the concern he had was that it it's just another, it's critical race theory, and that's a problem. You have it in the schools and it, they're very different. But we we, what we really have been missing the last couple of years is the ability to have our parent, have more interactions with our parents. And, you know, when COVID's over, what I really would want is to have uh principal copies and and with with parents and just times for people to talk and um about what's important to them. And that's been probably the the one piece that's been most painted on all this. Yes.
So I'm pleased to hear that we don't have critical race theory being taught in our school or our state, it sounds like. I have a question for you, though, and you're gonna know better than than me or maybe some of the people on the board. What what do you know about the the governor signing a new bill in July about lowering the standards for our graduates? I know I I I raised the question with you in an email, but could you bring us up to speed on what does that bill mean? How quickly will it be implemented and?
I think that's a great kept question, and what I think I, what I think the governor is attempting to do is to not put a black mark on kids who struggled through COVID in high school, so they can move forward. Because otherwise, if if Oregon has has had pretty high standards, when you look across the nation, and we've all been pushing for that, and in fact, I'm not really, just because the standards are lowered there, I'm actually looking to that we we maintain or we actually in this school district increase our rigor, particularly at the high school level. To do that, you need more supports. But I think it was a, it was a really a in her in her mind, well, I would not her mind. I think the thinking was, it was a humanitarian action to not penalize kids in high school who have had their education disrupted to the point that on the credit piece and stuff like that, that, you know, you don't hit that market when you're eighteen or nineteen, get the diploma, it's really hard to come back and get it, and that is a stumbling block. That's what I think the attempt was. I don't think in the long term, uh I suspect if we can get through this pandemic, I think you're gonna see those standards go back up, because they need to be up there.
Because what I read was it wasn't about COVID, it was more racially based and to to better serve some of the minority groups that were having a tough time meeting the standards. And I also read that it was going to be implemented this year and going to be in place for five years. I could be wrong, but that's what I read. Do you know much more about it than that?
The five years thing is accurate. I think it's because of the original impact of what's happened to kids' learning. I doesn't mean that school districts can't have a higher standard than the minimum. Um, I know in Memphis we did for a long time have higher standards than the state graduation standard, so um, it it's, I I I, you know, that's, the state sets the low bar. Communities can have the bar higher than that. You just need to make sure you're providing support for kids to get there.
So that's good news. I mean, that means that if they came out with this bill or law that says instead of getting a ten, you can get a diploma with a four, but the Butte Falls School District can still insist that we want a ten, is that oversimplifying?
What I would say is, it probably means that we probably have to offer an Oregon State diploma out of four, but we can offer a Butte Falls diploma out of ten.
Perfect.
And they're both diplomas, but we would have a distinction if that were the case.
Okay, so we could keep our, we can set our own parameters for what we want to see as a school district.
Right, they can be lower than the states. That's the thing.
Okay, that's good news.
Yeah, but but I my caution to you is, is when you do that, you have to be willing to provide the supports to help kids get there, because you're asking them to stretch higher than what the state resources are allocated to do, and I, it's doable. Um, that's why, that's why it's important that we keep our enrollment here. It's not just about keeping a school in this community, which is big, it's about That's why, that's why it's important that we keep our enrollment here, it's not just about keeping a school in this community which is big, it's about having the resources to maintain. Grow and maintain a level of rigor and support for kids.
Okay.
Well, and my understanding on that topic is we dropped a state testing requirement, but the kids still have to pass all their classes.
You know, I, I, I'm gonna wait for the state to come out, you know, that we have bills that pass and then we have rules that are made and they're interpreted and then we know what is. I'm still operating on the assumption that we're, we're following our graduation requirements and if. There is some reason why the board should change those, I'll come to you and you guys will study that through, that's what we'll do. Okay, I wanna, wanna see what else, oh, COVID protocols, we learned a lot last year, we're. The plan really is going to be that we would start that same thing as last year. Kids wear masks, people wear masks on the buses, we do screenings before they come into the school. Actually, we check them before they get in the bus, we screen them again before they get off the bus. Because we found when it's cold in the winter, their temperatures are lower when they get on the bus when they've been there. We're gonna restrict, keep kids on campus even at the high school to start the fall with these high rates. And keep it a safe zone and then, then release them in the afternoon and we'll do that. Hand sanitizing when they come in the, in the building, masks. Push hand sanitizing before meals or hand washing and just follow those. So that, that, those would be our COVID protocols, as far as isolation and. And quarantining, the Jackson County came out with some guidelines that they're, they're gonna finalize and we will follow the Jackson County guidelines. The state general guidelines, they're, they're deferring to counties on that and I, I think that's good. Anything else as far as our reopening? I'll give you an update on a factor in our reopening at the elementary. I know it looks pretty torn up, I've been told by our construction firm that we're still on track to have the exterior of the elementary campus. Put back together, don't know that it'll be painted, the classrooms are almost done. And they may have to do some roofing in September. Because there was a, a supply shortage of the insulation for the roofing and I really have pushed them, I want the roof done, I don't want to put it, the rest of it off. Until next year, so at this point they're still on schedule and that is, that is a safety thing. Our, our buildings will be seismically safer. Particularly, and then I think they're gonna be doing some, probably some additional work. I don't know if they'll have the cap, the outside of the gym cafeteria done particularly on the kitchen side. But Vitus Construction's been really good on their safety cleanup, I think some of you have noticed. Unlike other contractors, we've had the site has really been cleaned up. And they are working several projects, we are the one that's closest on schedule of all the projects they have, only, so. Just wanna let you know, that's, that's it, that's a plus, that's a positive when we get through that and we are. Moving teachers back into rooms now and getting things set up, teachers and staff will show up next Monday for four days of in-service training and prep.
So Dr. Long. Going back. For public record. The concept of critical race theory has not, is not part of our agenda, is not. Planned or set up as anything in the near future. And so it's really a non-issue with this school at this time.
Critical race theory is not a curriculum and it is not included in any Oregon curriculum standards.
Okay. I just wanted to go on record.
And I think there's enough people watching that if someone tries to sneak that in or something. It'll be rightfully.
Well, you know, up until this last year, I never heard of it. No one else had and all of a sudden it was a big issue. I've talked to people and I said, what's going on? I say do some research, people are really opinionated on it, but in our school, we've never ever addressed it. Never had any part of it of our curriculum, it's never been an issue. So we do not need that kind of a, a distraction in our school at this time.
I guess I would say, I think it's fair for people to raise the question, that's the answer.
Okay, thank you. So if you're done with.
Anybody that's really concerned should just talk to Dr. Long or talk about it at parent teacher conferences.
Yeah, right. So we'll go to. Four point O. We have further down a discussion of the resignation of the principal, but one of the consequences of that is in July, you made some designations and he was designated with some responsibilities. So we need to redesignate.
Okay, four point one.
Yeah, then I jump ahead.
Yeah. Official designations.
Right, can we go there?
Sure.
Okay. I, I just want to tell you the two that we need to change. And then I need a motion to do this, we had designated Jesse Jackson as the safety officer for the district. I would ask that you designate me as the safety officer because I'm the only administrator left standing right now. So that would be one and the second one would, would be under authorized persons to sign district and student account checks. Where Jesse Jackson was designated for district and student accounts, I would ask that we. Temporarily designate Julie Freeman until we have another option for that because we need a, we need a fourth person.
Let's see your sheet, I'm, I'm lost.
So here under safety.
Okay, do we have copies of this?
I thought you did, but you must not.
Do you have that?
Not in this pack, I haven't, I haven't worked for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
You're kind of flying blind on that.
Okay, those are, those are the two changes we need, instead of Jesse being designated as the safety officer, I need you to designate. Dr. Philip Long as a safety officer for the district. That's one and then the second one would be to designate Julie Freeman. As being able to sign on district and student account checks because we need that second signature, Jesse would have been.
I will make a motion to go with the revisions of the official designation.
So we have a motion to our second. We have a second by Murphy, all those in favor.
All right, all right.
Hi, good, I was gonna say if you had questions, that's a time to ask. Well, I was gonna ask who the first signer was.
Well, what it is, is there's actually usually three people, Rachel, myself and then. Office manager or the principal and, you know, so that, so we don't get hung up, we have to have more than one, but we don't get hung up if someone's not available. Thank you very much on that.
Okay, no questions, we'll go to five point O, new business, five point one. English learners in Oregon annual report, there's a fairly lengthy. Batch of paperwork in our packet.
This is a state report that was just generated every year. It is one of our responsibilities to make sure that this is made available to our community. One of the ways to do that is to bring it to the board, present it to you and then have you. Have it recognized that being presented at a board meeting and then we would post it on our website, accessible to anyone who want to read it with a, a message. So they could do that, so I'm presenting to you the English learners report. Or it's actually for two thousand nineteen, twenty because it lags by a year. And in it, what it really talks about is, is what's changed and what the current status is of second language learners. Who are in our schools, which is an increasing number, we actually. Have a student who's a second language learner. And in our small little district, but in other districts, it's a, it's a large portion of their, larger portion of their population, so I'm presenting that to you. You don't need to take any action to adopt or anything, it's, it's for information sake.
I have a question on it.
Please.
Okay, so I know this is about English learners, but in there it said that all school districts have to have a plan for their. Talented and gifted students, talented and gifted students. And I was just curious if, if we have something in place for that.
Well, if I recall correctly, because of our charter, we, we, there's language in our charter that. Works in lieu of a talented gifted plan, it does not, the nature of, of our school is. If we're meeting kids where they are and we're serving them, if we have students who are talented, gifted, then we are involving them, we should be involving them. In activities that challenge them, so, so that's my, my general response to that and it goes back to the charter that we have for our hands-on. Practical learning school district.
Okay, and that's in our charter?
I believe there's language in there about talented gifted, yes, it's been a while. Then if you have any other questions on that, Katie, you know, as, as you think on it, please give me a call because we want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
I, I've heard parents ask about it in the past and I just wanted to double check on this one.
Supposedly. You know, based on past comments from Diane Gorman and Shayna Brown and some of them. Our staff would address areas of. Expertise or abilities of students under like the talented gifted theme. In the past, we used to have a talented and gifted program. And in the charter concept, it was more kind of morphed into. We will address the capabilities and strong points of some of the kids in the areas that we can help. That, that supposedly was the theory. One of our board members was always pretty adamant about having the actual program, black and white. And then identify the kid to be in the program or whatever area it is. I have a tendency to kind of agree with that, but you know, we have. We have the ability and we have done this before, where we have worked with students. To make sure they graduate, make sure they've got certain standards and stuff and, and help them grow and do stuff. Now whether that helps them in their strong points, I don't know. But it would be nice to know that we do that.
Yeah, no, and that's probably why I've heard about this before in, in, in prior board meetings when I was on the board before.
Okay.
But it really kind of highlights those, those more intelligent children not getting bored in their classes, so it got me curious.
And if you want to go a little bit further out. I'd say myself and Murphy are strong advocates for a speech and forensic program. It teaches kids how to think analytically and everything else. And, and if you look at the results of. The education of kids in that kind of a program, they have gone on to be quite successful in other. Educational systems, college and other stuff, it teaches them how to think, analyze, do stuff. I'm a strong supporter of that, so. If at one time we can in the future have kids that get enrolled in that deal, I support it all the way.
I think we just lost our teacher that was doing the, like, speech and debate, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. But it, again, you know, comes with the territory.
On the subject that I think it's probably worth noting into the record or whatever and I'll preface that by saying. I know things are a little messed up right now with understaffing and COVID and everything else. But speaking from experience. We do need to differentiate the different programs, we do need to show that we are offering this. Some things that come to mind, like you said, Steve, are speech, I know that we've probably lost our music teacher. I know when we had, that needs to be brought back in some form. We've also talked for many years about a second language, Spanish, we've talked about all these extraneous programs. That people can be talented and gifted in, I know that we talked about. Emphasizing the trades, I can see Mark on my, my screen here, he provided at the, the job fair. Heavy equipment operating, I did a segment on forestry. You know, I, I want to reiterate that what we're doing in this district, does, it shouldn't just be. We met all the state standards, let's hand out diplomas, let's do things differently, we need to re-promote the NRC. And we need to have a strong technical slash trades. Agenda and curriculum to get people, they're not all gonna be doctors and lawyers. We need to re-emphasize and redirect our emphasis on real world jobs. And what it takes to be successful, not just getting a diploma. That may or may not be dumbed down these days, if, you know. You hear about it all over the place now more than ever that college is. You know, not a good job placement way to go, post-high school. There are more and more people are needing to learn trades and useful information to excel and to join the world, so. Probably not gonna happen overnight, probably not gonna happen this school year, but we as a board need to be focusing on. Not just making sure they get As, Bs and Cs, but actually providing them an opportunity. To have some kind of career, other than just saying, yeah, we graduated this many people and. Here's the grades that they got, I would much rather say, see a successful program that said. Did you hear about the class of two thousand twenty ones, some of them went into college, but you know, a good half of them. Are in a technical field, electrical, plumbing, carpentry, et cetera, et cetera, heavy equipment. We are the school that should be doing that more than any other school in this valley. We should be pumping out graduates that are ready to go to work and have had some kind of exposure slash background. Into the technical trade fields.
Yep.
I agree. Okay. I appreciate those comments, they're, they're, they're valid. You know, we had a welding program and with a small school, you have, you know, maybe one person that's pretty good in stuff. And that program will work and that person goes away and then you can't find qualified instructors to do stuff. But in your concept of bringing equipment up and showing kids, hey, here's a Bobcat or here's this, here's that. Exposing kids to that either work experience, technical, whatever, you know, hands-on. We should. Raise our rigors, the standards, and if we can offer something. Even if we're having to spend more money or find other alternatives. We need to do that for the benefit of the kids, we're not gonna be able to train them to come out of school to be qualified, but. If we can get their hands on, like you said, electrical or whatever, and they, they think, boy, I like this. Then their next step is down at Rogue Community or somewhere else where they can fine tune their schools, skills. Or go into a trade program or apprentice or whatever. And, and that's the best we can do is to open their eyes and their mind of, okay, college isn't the answer, but I could make one hell of an electrician. Or I know a kid that says, I wanna, I wanna learn how to run heavy equipment. And I, I think it's probably what he's training to do now after he graduated. And he can do that maybe working with some of our local waters or whatever, so if he wants to do that and we've kind of. Got him out there and then he's willing to put in the time, then we've done our part. And you know, the NRC is some of the deal, but you know. This would be, again, a small school, maybe facilitating the. Individual student of trying to open the, the doors for skills, so. Alrighty, Dr. Long.
Five point two.
I think five point two.
Last year you all approved a cooperative agreement with Prospect School District around certain sports. Both schools were selective about certain sports, they didn't want to co-op in and, and then we experienced COVID and that affected a lot of our programs. At this point this year, we're not gonna be able to field the football team and they probably need our players. So while you approve that co-op, I need specific action tonight from you approving. Cooperative arrangement with Prospect for our students to play football this season. OSA is lined up, we've done everything that what they're waiting for is board approval and I think we have two, two students at this point who. Will be participating, there may be a couple more that are recruiting right now, it's six-man football. I'm, the, the coach is Mr. Scott Thompson, who's well-known in our community. And I met with him, I talked with him a couple of times, I met with him, they were getting a lot of our football sled, practice sled. To take over there and he'll bring it back and we're working out details, I did lobby to see if we get at least one game here, I don't know what'll happen, but I think. I think we need to do this because we need those kids to have that opportunity and we'll work out the logistics around it.
Is there any reason not to?
No, I, I can't think of any, it's a connector for kids, but, but I just want to let you know because. Because the agreement excluded that before, I just want to add that in, I need board action because OSA is gonna want to see our minutes. because the agreement excluded that before, I just want to add that in. I need board action because OSA is going to want to see our minutes that you guys approved it. So I'd ask that you'd approve a cooperative, a relationship with uh, Prospect School District for high school football for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two season.
Also make that motion. Do I have a second?
All second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Done deal.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to six point oh, six point one resignation of principal, Dr. Long.
Well, um, as you all have probably figured out, my summer got a lot busier midsummer. And while I can't share a lot of the details of it, what I wanted to do is to assure the board. Uh, we hired, I think, a quality person to be our principal, but in these times, there are lots of things going on, excuse me, in families and in with people and and just you're receiving a lot of job movement, things of people just having to deal with it, so. Um, I worked with Jesse through July and early August and came to the point where he needed to make a decision because we needed to open school and I I needed to move forward and he reluctantly attended his resignation. He initiated the resignation. And I accepted it at that point because I knew um, if he was struggling and we continued, I I needed to have a hundred percent. I wasn't going to get it. So what I have done since then is I have been figuring out how to reorganize things so that we can start up school. Um, we've got our registration process about ready to go. And then I have been reaching out to see if I could find someone who could be an interim principal or at least a part-time administrator. Uh, my intent is to be here full-time this year because you need to have at least one administrator who's here full-time. And then we would um, provide supports for that. Um, it's unfortunate, but I also learned that when hard things happen, sometimes what you gotta do is, okay, how do we move forward? And that's, I I put out a request to staff to help. And immediately, the very first person who offered help, just like was our new teacher we hired, the sixth grade. So we're hiring good people and a lot of other people have stepped up and that's how we're going to get this going. Um, I am in the final stages of hiring an AD. Uh, Harry Hedrick is going to mentor that person this year. And um, and then I do have, I have identified a health PE teacher who will come to us on a restricted license. Um, he is a working on his master's degree, uh, Eastern Oregon and Eastern Oregon is working with their master's students. He's done all his training for teaching. He'd be a new teacher, basically, and Harry will be a mentor for that person too and probably his supervisor for the the college. And so that means that I can offer PE for grade six and seven, which means our six and seven grade teachers can do some other things with kids too. So and it's like the staffing piece for licensed staff is going to be solved with this. I still need to figure out the administrative support. And then I'm, I will be this week. Uh, we had some really helpful people this spring in our as temporary EAs. Um, as you know, we had several people move on, a couple moved out of state, so I'll be filling those positions and a couple more interviews to get all that staffing. We have some grant funds and I'm going to add some additional, I'm looking to add some additional EA support for our schools and that. So we'll be up and running, so it's going to go fast. Everyone's supposed to report next week. I just want to let you know, I think I'm going to be able to take care of the rest of the staffing, except for the administrative piece, which will work through and you you've got me a hundred percent now, so.
On the the, for the principal, is there requirements as far as qualifications go from the state, let's say, who can be a principal and who can't?
Um, ideally, you, well, you ideally, you're looking for someone who has had administrative training. They could even be due, but they need an administrative credential. Because because the probably the most significant change is that they're supervising people and they're evaluating people and teachers can't evaluate teachers.
Right.
Administrators can. That being said, I'm probably going to end up picking up uh, the bulk of the evaluation stuff that has to happen this year anyway, because I want to make sure it's going to happen. I'm just like, I'm looking for a seasoned pity to be a retired administrator who can come alongside and help.
But it, but they're required to have a college degree in teaching or at all or?
Uh, it is advisable if they're going to be supervising and evaluating people that they understand what those people do truly. And there are standards and there's a statement, there's a state mandated process for evaluating. So sure, so they they really need to be trained. There are legal ramifications, there are contractual ramifications, so I'm looking for people who have that knowledge level.
Sure.
But I I would say if anyone knows of someone who might just kick me an email, I'd be glad to talk to someone to see if it's going to fit. It's going to be about them being credible to our staff too, so.
Cause they're, thi- thi- this is the part I always kind of get hung up on. They're a supervisor and and if I understand it right, they're responsible for the structure and and uh, which doesn't always necessarily mean they're going to win a popularity contest with the people they're supervised.
That's true.
So someone were I guess as.
I would say there's two parts to it. There's a management piece, which is about making the operations run. And then there's a leadership piece, which is about moving, you you're talking about curriculum, it's about moving programs and things, so they really need to have knowledge of that. Because if you aren't credible in that and you're trying to get licensed staff to do that, they're not going to follow because you probably aren't credible, so.
But the state requires certification as a principal.
For a principal, yeah, so 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 the 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 reality is right now is all, everything lands on me because I have a license. I'm looking for additional help to help me with that. But but it's going to be a temporary or interim because we would reload it the spring and interview and try to seek another principal and uh.
Is there is there anything we can do, the district, to keep this from happening the next time? Was it district or personal?
Personal.
Okay.
Okay, no, I, people were really excited. It's just unfortunate. It it's similar to with our custodian who had to step down. Stuff happens in people's lives, you know. You can't, you want to go deal with their stuff.
Sure.
So it was a matter of the employee and the family was really the the biggest consideration and if that was not taken care of, then the school would be adversely affected.
I think we would have been adversely affected to continue without without allowing him to deal with that.
True.
And yet we needed a principal and if it wasn't going to happen, so, yeah.
Well, I support your decision.
Thank, thank you for your support on that.
So do you need a motion to accept his resignation?
Yes.
Motion. We have a motion for Murphy.
All second.
A second for Mark. All those in favor?
Let's accept the resignation of Jesse Jackson, his principal, uh, Beaufort Charter School, okay.
Okay, so now we go to six point two, other staffing updates.
Well, I kind of, I kind of leaned into that because I kind of just told you what I'm, what we're doing around the health PE
Okay.
and the EAs and all that, and I just am looking here, yeah. Uh, I, for purposes of OSA and all that, perhaps perhaps I need for you to designate me as the interim principal for the charter school, so OSA has a principal name because they're looking for that stuff and I am acting as principal. I don't know that you need to do that this meeting, but I put that out there unless we could solve this. We don't have a principal, otherwise.
Let us do it. I think it's probably wise to appoint Dr. Long as acting principal.
For the twenty twenty-one, twenty.
For the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, Beaufort Charter School. Uh, effective.
Immediately.
Immediately. So do we have a motion for that?
Motion.
I have a second.
Second.
So a motion and second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
So, okay, Dr. Long, you're the you're the go-to here.
Thank you.
Well, no, you know, I told you, I'm all in, so I guess I'm really all in. And we did, we just need to get this going, so.
Uh, any other questions kind of in these topics or we'll go to seven point oh, comments from the board? Who wants to go? I see Aaron.
Go.
You have something?
Good discussion tonight. I don't think we got too far out in the the weeds there, although it's tempting to and it's uh, really.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Katie.
Hold on. Are we doing comments from the board?
Yeah.
Go, Aaron.
My comment, my main comment to the board is for Dr. Long. I'd hate to think where we would be without you. It's nice knowing you're there, doing everything that you're doing. These times are very trying, a lot of scrutiny, a lot of questions, a lot of you know, anxiety around everyone's lives and how it affects our school district. So I just really appreciate you having tough skin and being able to you know, stick with it, stay on task and have a goal. And it sounds to me like your goal is to get this school open. It's not going to be perfect and it's not going to be normal, but nothing is, so my comment is just uh, I really appreciate you sticking with us and um, you know, you were hired to be here half-time and wouldn't be expected of you to dive in and go full-time and I feel for you that you did hire somebody to replace Diane and that didn't work out, but you're still with us and you're still trying, so I I really appreciate it, Phil.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. Uh, I guess we'll go to Katie.
I'm going to go with Aaron and um, we appreciate Dr. Long and everything you do for us and I I really appreciate that we can have a conversation with so many different opinions, be respectful of each other. And I also want to say, just based on conversations I've had with parents and the feedback from tonight, that I really hope we are able to offer some type of online option. I don't even know what that would cost us. I'd have to see it. Um, and I would really like to see us poll the parents about asking for county control. That doesn't mean we're in charge of medical decisions. That means the county is and hopefully the county health officials, which is kind of what I'm hearing for from parents, so that's it. And thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Katie. Mark?
Yeah, one, uh, I guess one comment or topic. I wasn't, I wasn't here at the start of the meeting. I don't know if we touched on the details surrounding these public meetings and how they are not public. So if you have a computer. But was that discussed at all beginning of the meeting? So a lot of feedback I've gotten is um, the lack of public meeting standards with uh, with this district lately and um, I know Zoom is an option. Uh, YouTube apparently is an option as well, but but it's a public meeting, public record. There's members here luck, elected by the public and the commit, members of the committee and myself feel the needs to be treated that way. I know you, there's a lot of reasons why it wasn't tonight. I don't know if if uh, you want to mention those, Dr. Long, but it's, it's um, I think uh, it's part of the job, it's part of the role and and uh, that's how we should do it, is my, my thoughts, so. Give, give, give the citizens, I guess, what what they deserve, so. If they don't want to risk, you know, a public place, they don't have to come, but at least give them the option. Let them make the decision on their own instead of, once again, us making it for them, so. That's my take on it and I'm sure there's some folks listening that want to hear why chose not to.
Uh, you know, I think it's fair to respond to that. We have the highest infection rates we've had throughout this whole pandemic right now. Um, there are only two people to set up the meeting. This is not, this is a special meeting. This is not during the school year. Chase and I would have had to spend the day setting up and making sure all the things supports are there and I'm down as administrator. Um, we did provide the option as soon as we realized there was an interest for the Zoom piece and recognize because we're not in regular session, the communication had to be through Facebook and our web website. Um, um, we did make the board aware of that and we're board members always have the opportunity to communicate to people what those channels are, the top of the agenda, it was posted how to do that. And uh, the the other challenge that we have is that in, this is a a pretty tense time right now in our country. And we're finding that that sometimes uh, some people will come to a board meeting and be disruptive. And we do not have the same uh, safety protocols in place as far as even law enforcement, if someone were to get out of control. And by that, uh, down in Eagle Point, I know they had a meeting recently. They have a police force that was accessible if someone misbehaved. There have been fights breaking out in board meetings, um, where patrons get upset with each other. Um, it is possible through Zoom for people to really share their comment and it's less emotional and it's more focused. I think tonight, even the people who wrote it, they all wrote very cogent communication to the board. They took time on that and it, the the thoughtful demeanor that we, even in your 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 discussion here, that is discourse that board members need to hear from the public. Uh, but I I do think there was a mechanism that occurred. I don't see with infection rates being high that we will be able to have large public meetings um, until the rates come down. But I appreciate, I I'm a person who likes to talk to people in person, you know, I don't like this piece. And if if I had to choose a FaceTime over a phone call, I'd do FaceTime because I want to, I want to see people, so. Please know it's really driven, most importantly, by the issue around the coronavirus right now and the fact that it's in our town. It's not just in Jackson County and we need to keep people safe.
So is there a threshold that once we hit a certain number, now we're going to go have public meetings? Besides this?
I, 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 I think uh, the fact that even churches, many churches are not meeting right now. It has to do with the county health department being concerned about super spreader events. You know, we, in this meeting right now, people may not realize we have an air purifier going and it works in this space for this number of people. But we don't have that same capability in a, in our larger areas, even our campus. I thought about having an outdoor meeting, but we had a smoke, you know.
Uh, that was suggested to me, people were fine with outdoors. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Murphy?
Just to comment on these public meetings, if the people are truly concerned about it and they didn't like the Zoom system, they have that option right here.
Mm-hmm.
They can write the letters and bring them in. And then we will review them as we did tonight. And that would certainly give them their public input.
Understand.
Okay.
Well, you know, I can understand. So, you know, I referred to these almost thousand people that are out here on our voters' rolls that are part of our district that we represent. You never hear much from them. There's kind of the old school that's set out there and vote and say, we trust you guys to run the school. And if we go back about twenty-five years ago, we went to a four-day school week. And boy, it was a hellacious battle because it was a battle of everybody on Friday closed the school down for sports. And so we was going to go to a block schedule and people were mad and they were raising hell and public meetings. And the board voted to go to a four-day week. And since then, we've always been a four-day week and it's kind of morphed into where we are today to accommodate sports when we can't get kids to go out for sports. So at the time, there was a hellacious political backlash. People were really mad about stuff. People were passionate about how are we going to keep teaching kids, how are we going to structure the classes, block schedule? And then the other side was, well, if the kids aren't here for school and they're in sports, then we need to do this. So I look at where we are today. I'm going to make an assumption that some of this input and discussion involved two things, critical race theory and the other part was the COVID protocols. And there's been a lot of stuff out on Facebook, a lot of comments. There's been some real hate discontent spewed back and forth. About different comments between people. And as a board person, I'm not willing to foster that kind of a public discussion. With us in, in, out and open. If people want to discuss or present something publicly. I can go along with relevant. Issues. But I also see people really upset over stuff that. Is not something that we are involved with right now. So. Yeah, we could have a meeting and. And and then I got to thinking. How are we going to structure? Where are we going to put it? You know, our buildings are tied up. The only way you could do is maybe out in the open. At the time, we didn't have much. Prep time to do it. But. I think what I'd like to see. Is that people are saying. We want to guide. Our own. Action as a school board for some of the. Restrictions or the mandates coming down from the state. Is that accurate?
A lot of it's just principal.
Yeah.
It's a public meeting that needs to be held in a public place.
So. Public meeting out in the open, I can understand that. Records, I heard that mentioned, you know. Everything's a public record, so I don't see issues there. So, you know, given maybe in the future. You know, I, I would like to see us. Go ahead, open school. Do the COVID, the masks and all of that. At the same time. Maybe we need to touch base with the people that. Are in the district to pay the taxes, to vote, do the stuff. You know, we got one side here, one side there, and then we have this. Huge base that support our school and what we do. First, you know, like I said. Our job is. And and I'm going to disagree maybe with people. I'm not going to get politically involved in fighting the state. And or the county or anything else. My focus on the board is. We need to educate our kids. We need to have the doors open, say, this is what we can do. Here we are. Here's the options. And and we'll try to respond or adapt to conditions. Limitations as they occur. It would be nice to be ahead of the curve with stuff. Aaron made some very valid points. And I I sent an email to him once and I said, Aaron, you know, maybe it's time for us to raise our stand. Academia. To, you know, not dumb down based on state standards. But, you know, internally within the district. Say, we're going to try to educate our kids. We're going to hold a higher standard. And it's easier said than done. You know, the teachers are trying to have the kids, are trying to get them in, do this, do that, all this other stuff. But I'm willing to spend the money. If we can find innovative ways to do some of these programs, or if we have to hire extra people to help kids get caught up. Because the kids got beat all the hell this last year. It's not fair to them to short circuit their education because of some of this stuff. So if we can have our teachers and maybe additional aides. Whatever it takes. You know, we find a kid struggling in an area that we work with them, get them caught up so that this year. You know, we're kind of getting back up to speed. We don't abandon. Our students. And we try to work with the families. That's all easy to say, but it's darn hard to do. But if it takes spending money out of our budget, going into a reserve and doing stuff like that. You know. I would tell Doctor Long, you do whatever we can do. To make our school better and then maybe. People can look at us and say. I can go along with that. And support us and then we don't get into the political fight and disruption and everything else. We're not going to be able to please everybody. We don't have the answers for everybody. But if we recognize it and discuss, tonight was a good discussion. You know, everybody got to say their piece. But you know. We didn't. It'd be nice to have a lot more maybe in comments. My fear is that, you know. If somebody, okay, we got some people that just want to cause trouble. Others are looking for solutions. It's, it's not what you're against, it's what you're for. So if you're for something and for this school and want to make it better, I'll support that a hundred percent. If you're against something, don't expect me to support it. That's my comment. So. That said, we'll go to eight. Adjournment, all of us in favor?
We do, we do have an executive session, brief one after this.
Okay.
But we need to adjourn. We need to thank everyone who stuck with us and anyone who watches this video because it is out there on YouTube now. The, there'll be people who'll watch this later. You've seen robust discussion. Our goal is to open school the day after Labor Day for our children. And support our families, so thank you.
Okay, so we'll go out of regular session into executive session. At eight fifteen PM under.
I think you can actually adjourn this meeting.
Do we vote to adjourn this meeting first?
Well, Doctor Long thinks we can adjourn it. We don't need to go into executive session.
Okay, so I guess be very clear that as soon as we're done with executive session, we will adjourn, but there'll be.
Okay, so Doctor Long has corrected the process. So we'll go into executive session under ORS one nine.